Good evening and welcome to the Norwood City Schools Board of Education Committee Meeting for October 10, 2017. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Would everyone please rise and speak for the members?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll go directly into Item A, our discussion items. Our first order of business is our city council leads on this. Do we like?
Let's have a couple of, just one or two things that might be of interest to you. We don't have the first of two public hearings tonight, this council meeting and the next council meeting, on potential funding for community development block grant funds. And the reason I bring that up to you is because in the past, for I want to say maybe 15 years, at least 15 years, maybe 18 years, we have, the city has asked for funding to do the Norwood youth dental program in the schools where a hygienist, first a dentist comes in and checks the children's teeth and tells the hygienist that yes, the teeth can be cleaned and what teeth might need to be sealed or any caries or whatever that can be reported to a dentist. And then the hygienist comes back and does those cleanings and fluoride treatments and sealants on the students who have signed up. We have gotten the community development block grant monies to cover those students who are, who meet the income timelines, who might be of low or moderate income. And we had made a conscious decision from the very beginning that we would not have this just for those children, but we would offer it to any children in the Norwood schools. And the Norwood Health Department has been very fortunate to have donors, particularly the Norwood Eagles, who have picked up the cost, who have made a donation and have picked up the cost of those students who could not be reimbursed through the community development block grant funds. This round of funding, I just found out yesterday that that dental program might not be eligible for funding anymore because there's potentially funding for that under, basically Medicaid. The students who qualify for the dental program should qualify for Medicaid. And while, as I told the lady, you can certainly lay a horse to water, but you can't make them drink, we, the Health Department has provided those Medicaid applications to those families who might meet the financial eligibility, but that doesn't mean that they necessarily apply for it. And just because you have a medical card doesn't mean that you have an easy time finding a dentist who will accept that medical card and do those things with you, for your children. So we've had intense conversations over the last couple of days, and I want to assure you that the funding will continue through this school year. The funding cycle, I believe, begins in July. It's either, it ends either at March or the end of June. So I'm not really exactly sure of that, but there's enough funding to continue for this school year. In fact, those cleanings and fluoride treatments have already begun in some of those schools. And when Chandra Corbin from the Health Department had a conversation with the lady who leads up the Hamilton County Program, Chandra made her aware of some things that she was not aware of, and so she is going to do a little bit additional research. So in case you hear at the meeting tonight that that might not be able to be funded, I just wanted you to know the story upfront and that there's still going to be work done behind the scenes. I had suggested a couple of other options to the Health Department, and we'll be working closely with them if we need to, to get some additional, some other outside funding grant funds or people to sponsor the program. So that's the main thing I wanted to convey to you tonight. The rest of council has to do with tethering up animals and some nuisances of, other than trees or plants that might be growing in the Devil Strip to make those nuisances, because there are a couple of places around town that we've seen some overgrown areas, and so it will allow the city to then clean up those, the Devil Strip area, which might restrict the line of sight. Those are the two things that I wanted to report to you this evening. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer anything that you have. Hopefully it's a not issue where we can get it covered again. We won't be setting any priorities tonight. It's just hearing from the public. At the next meeting, council will have to decide what things they want to ask for and then what amounts, and then we set priorities. And the Norwood Dental, the Youth Dental Program has always been high on that priority list. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Do you know how many kids take advantage of that program?
You know, I don't know offhand. I remember that when I was the Health Commissioner when it started, and it was when the family and children first initiatives first took place. We had done, Kathy Strosser and Deb Robinson and myself had, every student fill out a survey about whether they had a dental home and a medical home and just the status, the status of any insurance and things. And it was pretty astounding. I want, I want to say that maybe 75 or 80 percent of the students didn't have a dental home or an identified primary, you know, primary dentist. And so that's what got us thinking about it to begin with. So I know that not only, I think there's a fair amount of students who take part in that. I don't have that off the top of my head, but I can certainly get that for you. The Health Department keeps those statistics every year, and I'll be happy to get that for you within the next day or two.
Any updates on Allison or how did that?
Council approved a preliminary plan, and the Planning Commission unanimously approved the final plan. So that has been set for a public hearing on the first week of, or the first meeting in November, whatever, the second Tuesday in November, so that would probably be...
14th.
The 14th. So we'll have a public hearing on approving the final plan, the preliminary and final plans on that. So I don't see there being any problem with having that passed by council that night.
Is that the last step in the process?
Yes. Because the Planning Commission did approve the final plans. Council had only seen and been asked to approve the preliminary plan, so this is, this should be the final step in November 14.
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
Appreciate it. Our second item is construction update. That's right. I've invited John Peter to speak about side construction update this evening. He's closest to the work. And although we talk often, including Mr. Strosser, I think John can best capture the latest information. John, do you want to share?
Sure. Unfortunately, the doors that we were talking, two weeks ago, did arrive and were installed, but they were not the doors that I was expecting. The doors that were installed were the ones for the office doors, the new offices in Sharpsburg Elementary, Mr. Westendorf's office, the council's office, the conference room there, as well as around the other buildings, the monitoring room, doors, new door here at Williams. They went in, they have windows, but the glass was not installed at the time either. So right now it's plywood in them, but the glass should be coming soon to get installed to finish out those doors. The actual doors, we were hoping for, the secondary secured doors that come with the door opener, door release and all that, they said would begin to be shipped towards the end of October, so hopefully the next couple of weeks. They want to coordinate with us, I think two weeks from today we've got a meeting scheduled to begin looking at the school calendar and find out when they can actually get into the buildings to get them installed. Some of the buildings, locations, the middle school, high school have a lot of those doors, so they're going to take a little bit more time than a separate door spot like you or William's that have doors open. So we're going to try to coordinate as the doors come in, when would be a good break. We know we're closed for Election Day, and then that following Friday for Veterans Day, and then Thanksgiving, you've got to work on Saturday, Friday of that week where you can get work done there. In the meantime, they're trying to get work done on second shift and on some Saturdays that they can do. I'm not sure if anybody noticed when we came in, if you came through the parking lot over here, they were taking out the door just now, tonight, they're taking out the door from the garage into the hallway here at Williams, the administration building, and they're replacing that door. That's being done tonight. The past few weeks, there's been an electrician pulling some wire, getting ready for the doors, and some hanging going on. So there is work going on, but we're trying to coordinate it second shift or Saturdays around the school day. As far as the masonry, work going on at the middle school, we went around with the construction company today, we started getting a punch list together of items. They had the contract to be able to work on the building until October 31st. They told us this morning, they look like they're well in line to finish up early or in an extra week, so that was good news. Punch list item, nothing really came out to be too earth shattering, just a couple of other cracks they want to fill in, holes and stuff they must have got missed. So that's all going on well, even a little bit ahead of schedule. I did want to put out one comment that the foreman gave me a few weeks ago. He said in all the places he's worked, he's never seen so many accommodating teachers and staff, and even the students have been extremely respectful when they would pass each other in the parking lot or the hallways or whatever. So that was very nice to hear, was very encouraging. So that was a good, it was nice to hear.
I think between John and Dave, they're both staying on top of the work that needs to be done, and then just to be sure that the work is good quality. So we appreciate their effort. Any questions? Any questions? Thank you, John.
Item C, our student fees, lunch fees.
Student fees and collection of those fees are always challenging, and so I thought it important to put on the agenda just that we discuss it. When I say student fees, I'm generally speaking about athletic fees. As you know, it's about $50 to participate. And, you know, in a perfect world, those fees would be paid before a student took to practice or to even, you know, play. So we've been working to collect those fees. And then the question just came up, well, what if a student is on free and reduced lunch? Do they then get their fees reduced, or do they have to pay them at all? So I've done a little bit of digging on that, and actually the correct answer is that they wouldn't have to pay any of those fees at all if they're on free and reduced. Of course, there's some privacy issues with that. Coaches are not permitted to know that kind of information. So we would, of course, just collect the names of those who have not paid, and then those who would find themselves on that list, and then we would continue to try to collect from them.
So we, okay, they're not required to pay?
Not required to pay. Although we have always tried to put people on payment plans because we know generally what you pay for, you really appreciate and respect, and I think we, you know, have continued to operate that way. So I'd imagine we would, you know, continue to work that way. We know that there are students with high needs, and I think we're always willing to make those allowances. We're always want to keep our eye on what's equitable and what's fair, which sometimes, you know, things are not equal, but we want to be sensitive to people's personal needs and not let that keep them from participating. And I think that's what put this discussion item on the table, is that, you know, anyone who wants to participate and is truly, their family is not able to support them with the fee, we want to make allowances for that. There are organizations that are willing to support individual students in that manner. And so we encourage that.
So that, just so I can understand, that's, there's no recuperation from those lost fees from our perspective, other than having like an Athletic Boosters or some other organization would donate or give that fee?
That's right.
And I know we've kept, we've worked really hard to keep our fees low, because it's $50 once a year, and you can play as many sports as you want, whereas other schools are several hundred dollars per sport, plus the equipment and all of that. So I know we've worked really hard, but I'm pretty sure this isn't widely known.
No, probably not something, yeah.
Right.
I think, you know, when you pay for something, oftentimes there's a commitment level that you make to that sport. So particularly, you know, when you consider the rulebook and the guidelines for Heisman Web Rights, and even just generally, you know, higher, you really don't want to quit one sport and then think that you're going to quickly join another, or even a different season, because that can impact your participation. So I think just the ideal of paying to play, or working with whatever resources you have to find an entity to help you with that, I think that's a good life skill. Because if that's something that you're challenged with now, generally you'll be challenged with that just a few years later, and you'll be able to work through that, I think, a little more quickly if you build that skill set. So, you know, I think it's just something that we want to remain continuously sensitive to. I think the bottom line is we don't want someone to not participate because they can't play, or can't, can't pay. We want them to be able to play. They have an interest and a desire to participate in a team, we want them to make that dream come true. We don't want money to stand our way to that.
Absolutely. And I think that this all came to light, I had had a conversation with Kathy last week regarding an experience we were having through football, and I think there was just a few things with sharing training and information with our athletic department and our coaches, just because I think it's being handled in very different ways across all of our sports. I'm only privy to a few here, but I can imagine it's different for each one. So just understanding like how they're asked to collect the money, you know, is there a process? How is that information being shared to the students and the families? And then once it gets down to it, the sort of threat of, well, you can't play this week if your fee isn't in, is that, you know, are all the sports doing that or not? Just so that we all play on the field, the same playing field, I get that we want, we want and slash need that fee, we do need to have that, but just making sure that kids aren't penalized for something that isn't out of their control, this is key for me. One other thing that I heard was, and I don't even know if this is true, but it was a rumor from a child that said, well, if I quit this sport, I have to sit out for half of the next sport. So sort of to discourage that, you know, I'm just not sure.
It's actually 20 percent. That's part of our policy, 20 percent the next season they have to sit out.
I thought it was half, but 20 percent.
I would like to make it half, but 20 percent's fully agreed upon. Now, the financial pieces, I revise code.
Legal counsel.
Legal counsel said that? Interesting.
It's probably, more it's further discussion, just so that we can get, be clear on how we want to handle this. Going forward, I don't know if our athletic director needs to be brought in, or sort of how we're going to go about that policy and procedures, just so that everybody is aware. And we're not inconsistent.
I would propose that, well, to begin, we need to, we need some consistency on how we go about collecting. And that just, that's, that begins with a very good beginning to any sport. And so we've worked to put some efforts in place where, you know, we know coaches, they can't, you can't hold practices unless they've gone through service certifications. So the same is in tune for students. You can't begin a sport unless you have done these formal things. And so I think this is just one of those things that needs attention prior to taking the court, the field, what have you. I think that we need to make sure that we have that, because that says we're ready for the sport.
Right.
And it's a prerequisite. I think how people, when I speak about people, I mean individual students go about paying for that fee, I think we can work through that on a case by case basis with each and every child, just like we do with their education. I don't think, I don't think any amount of money should keep a student from being able to participate.
I agree. I agree. And I know they've done, they make huge strides with getting physicals, because that's the other requirement, is a physical.
Yes.
And that should really reduce the cost as well.
What I can say is I don't know of a child who has not participated because of money, but, you know, we don't know of all those who didn't try out or didn't show up because they knew about it.
Right. Yeah. I'm sure there are. Okay. All right. Thank you for the update on that. That's good. I don't have any more work to do, I'm sure. Thank you. All right. Item D is the Interact for Health Grant. So I'm excited about this. The Interact for Health Grant is, is an opportunity for us to apply for a grant, and we are going to move forward applying, because the application is truly just to apply for a planning grant. And what Interact for Health Grant is, is just simply school-based health clinics. Seems to be the thing tonight, which wasn't certainly purposeful, but what school-based health clinics do is they provide dental and eye care, anything a general practitioner can do. Immunizations, checkouts, physicals, all of those things that we are struggling to get accomplished. So what's exciting about this is that we're going to begin to investigate how this would look in Norwood schools. We're going to apply for the grant, which is to simply investigating the opportunities that, how we could apply that, this option here in Norwood. There are a number of other sites that actually already have these up in money, and CPS, I think they have 24 different schools who are already school-based health clinics. Princeton, Fairfield, and West Claremont all have them. So it's nothing new, but I think it's, I want to make clear, it's not in, in the space of a Kathy Strosser. So it doesn't take the place of a school nurse, but it certainly works with a school nurse, and it does far more than a school nurse could possibly do. You know, she can't get immunizations. Sometimes those are things that children are not able to get in a timely manner, and that means we can't let them in school certain times. So this could truly help us to serve our students. And all these kinds of things happen within the school day, they would not happen outside of school day. So I just wanted to let you know that we are going to apply for that grant. Generally, those grants are about $10,000 to $20,000, and it's just a team of folks who come in and they'll work with us. Kathy Strosser is on the team, as well as Deb Robinson, and we'll work together with this team to decide how it would look best here, and then make some suggestions.
The most exciting thing about it, in the end, if we are able to see this happening here, that we would look for a medical partner, and that medical partner could be any number of Mercy or any one of those.
There's so many around, isn't there?
Yeah, there are.
Okay. Great. Item E is Norwood Ready Kids.
So Norwood Ready Kids is probably a name that most of you are familiar with, but it's per programming for children prenatal through school age, and some of the programs include Baby Bear, Every Child Succeeds, Play and Learn, Parent Group, FIP, Spark, Head Start, and Great Start. That's just to name a few. Presently United Way is the fiscal agent and the organizer of these programs, and a major supporter financially to Norwood Ready Kids is Shepherd Chemical. They have reached out to us to accept their large donation. The past four or five years, they donated about $100,000 to United Way to organize these efforts. But they're asking for us to organize these efforts, and actually it's a real, really fantastic opportunity for us. As we were talking the other day, we thought about, wow, we could, we could be organizing our own programming from diapers to diplomas. And that's essentially really just broad servicing of our other students. Nothing would change about the programming, actually would probably be even more enhanced. And we would perhaps add programming for those moms who become pregnant, and then of course, working with those students prior to, you know, their enrollment in their garden. So we are looking to become that fiscal agent for Norwood Ready Kids. We intend to keep the name Norwood Ready Kids, and United Way has already agreed that that's not copyrighted, that's something that we can take on. So we're really working now to make that transition. So we're working with the team at United Way, and we'll actually be working in two days, actually, with some of the service care providers, and just letting them know what it would look and sound like to work here in Norwood. So again, the program doesn't change, we're more just a fiscal agent of that. And really, the bottom line intent is that Shepherd Chemical's money goes for Norwood Ready Kids, not perhaps United Way's vision would be encompassing all of Hamilton County. And so his money would stay right here in Norwood, and that's why our becoming fiscal agent is sure.
Do they have like a physical location, or would they be in here?
I don't think so. It's so, because there's so many programs, and most of them are visits, so don't be that they would have a physical space on it. That's not how we see it right now.
I see them on Facebook all the time.
Yes.
I'll get updates and lots of things I do. Good. Good. Thank you. Item F, our committee, committee meeting locations. So I know we had talked last month about just being able, taking the opportunity to get out and exploring our buildings, especially as we have so much construction going on. So this is a proposed list of locations that we can meet. So obviously October, we're here in this boardroom. We would stay here in November, but then in December, we would host the committee meeting, so the first meeting of the month, in Sharpsburg Auditorium. And then starting in January, we would go to View, February, Williams, March, Middle School, April, and May, we'd be back in the boardroom, as well as in the summer months, because there will be a lot of construction, probably not as much progress at that time, but.
Some of those, we want to make sure that we're accessible, so we may have to move to the cafeteria.
Right.
For just maybe accessibility, to make it easier for people to attend.
Absolutely.
Did you, for one, the website number changing? I think this month had, last month's board notes added, the high school mini auditorium for tonight. And so that was, oops. I almost went to the wrong spot.
All right. Good call out. We'll, we'll look on that. Okay. All right. Anything else to cover? Go then through the actual agenda. All right. So I know Cherry's not here, so the first item is our education report. There are a few items that are being asked for approval. The first one is A, the approval of job description, desktop support technician. B is the approval of law firm Camelot Norwood Agreement. And then there are three student trips that we'll be approving in our October meeting.
Sarah, just want to add to that, you can probably expect that we're going to add a few more trips that did not make this agenda, and I'm thinking of baseball, oh, hang on. I'm sorry, those are facility requests, I apologize.
Okay. So no more field trips?
No field trips, sorry.
No worries, no worries. All right. And then item two is our personnel. We have our superintendent recommendations.
You see a resignation, and of course, approval of classified sub. We'll be approving the exempt salary schedule, and our new employee, our desktop, desktop support technician, and the student assistance aides, and then we're going to, we have a few folks that we need to change their status. And I think that concludes employment. We will have additionally a resignation of Paige Elliott, a Sharpsburg Educational Aid.
Okay. She's listed on page four.
She's?
Yeah. There's a correction. That'll turn into a resignation?
As a, as a Sharpsburg Educational Aid. And she's still doing.
And she's still doing cheerleading. Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay. And then item three is policy committee. Mr. Pfeffer, keep them busy.
I have a list of things and I left them on my desk. So this chess.
Yes, I'm happy.
I'm going to dive into it, but you tell me what I missed, okay?
Okay.
The first two, EBBA and dash R are for defibrillator training.
That's correct.
I said it once along.
So we'll be doing that for the whole, the new requirements for all of the certain personnel to be trained. So we'll be taking care of that for our professional building. And we have them in every building, correct? We do. And athletics too. Now everyone will be trained that is an employee. I think the requirement is all full-time employees.
The next two, I think are just approvals or modifications.
The regulation with the first aid is just about, just a kind of a, almost a typo. They use the word is instead of are, and they're adding in emergency care. So it's just still about first aid. So you're talking about the criminal records check?
Yeah, the criminal records under the basic.
Yeah. No, no real change, but important for us to approve it at this time just because of notations in the, in the requirement. So you're good with that?
And then the college credit, there was a lot of changes in this. I know one was changing from the March 1st date to February 1st. And then we also spelled out what was expected for, or needed for the requirements for the student, as well as the family to apply. And if they miss the deadline, that they could appeal. And if the appeal was shot down by the building principal, they could appeal that to the superintendent who did the final say.
That's correct. And so that is more fine tuning of that because it was a little more open previously. And we were hearing messages that it could be go, the appeal would go all the way up to the state level, to the state board. But now the appeal can go to the superintendent and that is final. And any requirements are pushed now to the Ohio Department of Education. The state board isn't interested, well, they're interested, but they're not interested in this level of detail. It would be our regular OD department that handles it. So nice job, Mr. Pfeffer.
That covers those two and the last two.
That's correct.
Then the interscholastic athletics, that was just a reapproval on that, just an updating, correct?
That's correct. There is one additional revised code, just a legal reference. So it just mentions parents and students now have to receive a copy of that sudden cardiac arrest guidelines. That's new, newer. So it's just a notation for the revised code that makes sure that we continue to do that. And because we use final forms, we're even on it with that work.
And then the other two, the interscholastic, the interrogation and search is the JFG and JFDGHR. It's just adding the word designee into the administrator's line there. Did I miss anything?
You got it. That's some good work. I have my key sheets. All right. All right. The next item is four, Buildings and Grounds Committee Report. Mr. Bryant.
So just right now, I've just got the approval for reimbursement.
We are, I think we're getting some more Sharpsburg PTO of October 24th to introduce candidates. And then the Ohio Valley Basketball Officials, they want to continue an education class on a number of dates. October 30th, November 6th, 13th, 20th, and 27th at the middle school. And then baseball, it leaves out elementary, October 18th, and organization meeting. And then baseball at Shea Stadium, Sundays, June 7th to 24th. And Thursday, May 6th and through June 28th. And then Young Life with Jimmy Bird at the North High School meeting on Mondays, September 4th meeting.
Other states for North High School, we mentioned those two jobs.
Yes. We actually checked with the auditorium calendar because we want to make sure that, because usually they like the auditorium, the Valley Basketball Officials. So we worked around legally blonde, our fall usable, make sure that they get first choice.
And then the dates for John, for North High School.
Right. Right. Oh, a different John. You have a different John. Yeah, we'll make sure we stay out of the way of the progress of construction.
All right.
Okay. Good. And then item five is the finance report. Mr. Miracle.
Yes. Item A, the contracts, the freehold the asking contract. And two is the NTA supplemental. Item B is.
Just a real quick update on those. And the asking, we have been advised that those have been approved by the union. And on the NTA supplemental, that has not been approved yet at the elder vote. So that may or may not be on the agenda, the final agenda when we get it next week.
Would you like to elaborate on the two agreements?
Yes. I have a quick note up here for you. The first agreement is a recommendation on investment management agreement with need or public funds. This is the group that also manages the Star Ohio program that we're currently invested in. And what they have done, first of all, I gave them our cash flow analysis for the next three years. And they looked at that and said, what can we do with that today in terms of investing that in a portfolio that they would put together? And you can see what their recommendation is right now is that about 35% of that would be in US government agencies. Then 25% would be in FDIC CDs. And then about 40% in commercial paper. And I have certainly expressed conservatism on the commercial paper side of it. But this is the group, by them being involved with Star Ohio, that's where we've been getting our exposure to commercial paper. And so these guys are using the same types of investments as Star Ohio. So I feel more comfortable with that. I met with these guys about three months ago. I also have, Mr. Peters is looking that over. The agreement's over and we'll have that done before the board meeting. On the second page, there's an example there of what they've been able to look at and say from the cash flow, here's what's available. If we did this today compared to Star Ohio alone, how much better would the return be? And they're showing that that would be about $150,000, $160,000 more over the time period. But I also have to remind you that that's no guarantee. The main thing we're interested in is protecting our principal. And the, as interest rates go up, then that certainly is not going to be the same differential there. So what do I mean by that? Well, three months ago, we met already, even though it's not huge moves in terms of seeing big numbers, interest rates are up about 15% from about 1.3 to about 1.45. So that is just their, you know, analysis as of today. The funds that we invest in would be held at US Bank in the trust department. And Bill was looking that agreement over as well. So that was, that's on the investment side. And I think I sent that to you over the weekend as well. In this report as well, Mr. Miracle, since the third agreement, we have the Hamilton County Sheriff's Department, that's on the next page of this, the final page of the report I put together. And that agreement was a three-year agreement, but it did expire July 31st, 2017. They did mention that to us and we have agreed to operate under a month-to-month on that. And we did, Miss Sabo and I met with them this week on Monday. And they are putting together what basically has been expressed as the things that you would like in that agreement and a one-year agreement. And the goal is to at least have a draft of that by October 31st. It may not be ready to be adopted because they have to have that reviewed by their legal counsel as well when that gets done. So that's all three agreements and the status of those. So we probably will not have number three ready for you to adopt next week. But in my report here that I just gave you, I wanted to bring you up to date on where that was at and the agreement's status for the last three years.
Okay. And then item C is the approval of the Interact for Health Grant, which we talked about very early with Mr. Sabo. D is the approval of the disposal of assets. Looks like we're disposing of some funds. Item E is approval of purchaser of over $20,000. And item F is the approval of the financial report, says, including the five-year forecast.
I did send you the five-year forecast and Christina was going to bring it up on the screen for us here since it's a little bit hard to see on your phone there. But I did want to take a couple of minutes and review that with you, if that's okay? And so we didn't print a bunch of copies of this for you. And I never thought, until I sat down and looked at you trying to look at it on the small phone, that that would be, that might be a little bit of a challenge here. So right here, where we're at right now is the, the smallest, I guess, if you will, amount of lines that we can use to show you where we are today and where we are projecting to go. The trend is pretty much the same. We have sufficient, if you look at where it says ending balance, we have sufficient cash reserves through the forecast. We are not modeling any new levies in this. But if you look at 2022, you will see that number right into the revenue number of 27 million 554. That you will see the 1 million 648. That's just our reminder now that we do have a renewal levy. That is one half of the revenue. That'll be the first half 2022. So that levy must be renewed by November of 2021 in order to maintain that revenue. So we have to earmark that, show that as part of the forecast because it is subject to renewal within this time period. So that's the only levy activity on here. If you look at 2018, you'll see that we're up. It looks, if every year were like 2018, it would look great in terms of just finances. Because if you look at the yellow line, our revenue is more than expenditures. The biggest reason for that, if you recall, is the $990,000 transfer, or I'm sorry, not transfer, but the settlement on the mall sale over at Rockwood. And so that money is in here. And previously, I had mentioned to you that we would show that as a transfer out, or I would recommend that as a transfer out to the permanent improvement fund. But, you know, right now, that's a decision that you don't have to make. So it is left in here, so that's a difference from the August forecast. So that is adding to our cash balance as well as we go out. And I didn't have a chance to get it ready. I went over it with Kathy earlier this week. But I need to review the permanent improvement funds with you. We have basically three sources there to deviate from this just for a moment. And we have the original capital plan that you've been following for the past five years. The last couple of years, instead of when you started making the decision to go toward a building, those funds were just transferred into the PI fund to go toward a building project. Then there's the permanent improvement fund levy. That, part of that will be used to fund the project as well in the second round of borrowing. And then we have our annual transfers, which I'll show you here in a minute, to the technology portion of the permanent improvement fund. So those, that part is very solid and, you know, we keep looking at that. So it's not that you need to transfer the 990 in there. I think it's something that I would look at on a year-by-year basis or later this year even to see where that goes. This does reflect all of the negotiated agreements that we have had so far this fall. So we're current on that. All right. Let's take a look at a couple. I want to, I want to take Christina's maybe, you know, just page down a little bit right there for just a second. This is one of our challenges as you look at the projections for revenue. You can see that the real estate, the very first line, which is an important line item to us, that we are showing some growth there. And the reason for that is that we, we don't have final numbers yet, but we got, we have pretty good indication from the county that we're seeing some uptick now in property values. And so that's a good thing we're experiencing there. So right there, I'm modeling that at about where the county-wide average is that was reported in terms of property values going up. We could do a little bit better than that. I honestly don't expect us to do worse than that. So those are the changes that are going forward. But when you get down to the first gray line, that is our challenge. There's just not, it's 0.68% average annual growth in our total revenue. And so there's not much growth in revenue. Our state funding is not growing. If you look at the state funding, which is line 1.035, in 2018, you'll see a minus in there. And that's actually because of adjustments from prior year and some accounting that we had last year. Where we posted some property tax, personal property tax reimbursement here. We're not getting those this year. So that's the reason for the decrease there. So I just remind you, it's pretty flat revenue, not growing revenue source. If you look, Christina, if you kind of page until you see other revenue, probably go up about another five pages. That's it there. And there's a note, as you guys had these as well to look at. One of the challenges that we're having with the tip revenue is right in the $2 million range right now is that we're trying to, you know, talk to you about the one piece of property that when they first started this development, this is the Rockwood property. They were, they had proposed a $100 million market value investment. And right now, it's at about 75 million. So that's one that we're going to be looking at. I'll keep you abreast of that in terms of how we did that value appraised and assessed to see if there is a higher value for that. Right now, I've bent the revenue back to where we are today in terms of that value. So that will be a reduction from what I've been showing you before. So that's probably the most notable thing in terms of operating revenue. But on the next page, I think, other financing sources, I just wanted to make this clear to you as well. We had about, not, first of all, this includes advances that are repaid from other grants, funds that we loaned to them at the end of June. So that was about $250,000 of this. The other piece of this though, is that we had two general fund and you'll see a corresponding bump in 2018 on other financing uses. So it's non-operating, but we had Medicaid Special Cost Center where we put revenue in there to track it separately. We really don't need to do that. So it's all general fund money. And there was also where we were tracking preschool severance. We have the account codes to do that. So I just collapsed those. And so it's just a matter of an internal transfer. So since that's there and it's rather large, I wanted to point that out to you. But it is, as I said, non-operating. In terms of the expenditure side, everything that you've had a chance, and we'll get this posted to the webpage as well, you've had a chance to look at from sending it to you on Saturday. But I did make a note to you, if we go to the expenditure, kind of that first table, you know, one of our problems is you saw 0.68 annual revenue growth, but we have 4% average annual expenditure growth. And one of those line items that is very significant in addition to personnel is in the area of purchase services. So I want to talk to you about that for just a moment. And then I want to remind you on other uses of the transfer plan that's in there. So if we can page down to, again, as I said, the salaries and benefits, that's everything that's gone through negotiations. So those are all reflected in there. And the next one is purchase services. So just scroll down and you can see the note just a little bit. You can see that it's going up. A lot of our tuition, not a lot, this is where our tuition, all of our tuition is accounted for. So whether it's community schools, which by the way, did take a bump down last year. We won't really have good community school numbers until about January, sometimes even February or March. Because it's a combination, not just of our data, but all of the data from those community schools. So right now, I'm projecting that at last year's level. Could it go down a bit? I kind of expect it to. Hopefully that will. But the special education tuition is a big part of this. There's two forms. One is where we direct place with folks to serve kids, where we just simply don't have the resources to serve those people, those young people. And then the other is when other districts have our students, for example, we have to reimburse them for the cost of special education. One thing that I've added to this since August forecast is an attempt, because we are aware of a situation where there's some high costs coming in placements. So I disclosed that there in terms of, there's an additional 217,000, both for student tuition needs. And then we've had some additional placements as well. The numbers we're hearing that may. The numbers we're hearing, that may not cover all of it, probably won't. If you look at it over a five-year period of time with what I have in there, it's going to be in the range of where we need to be. Could it be about $300,000 to $400,000 or worse? It could. And if you look at that over the next three to four years, I don't make light of that, but that could consume resources. At the same time, there could be expenses that aren't quite as bad. So all we can do with that now is, once we have firmed up on the cost and the timing when that occurs, those costs occur, is we'll update you if it deviates from the plan in here that we have right now. We will also pick up, which is not reflected in here, the, some potential additional revenue, but it's pretty complicated to get that nailed down. For example, I don't necessarily expect it on the addition, we have three additional placements, I don't really expect any additional revenue on the case that is a high-cost special needs case, that one I would expect to be some reverse one. Could it be $40,000 and that's not in there on the revenue side? So that will help offset that a little bit. If you look at the other uses, which is I think, cut more down, right there. I think if you scroll down to the middle of it, there's a table in there. And I just remind you of this, that you have this as part of the plan. What I have added is a miscellaneous transfer of $40,000, you may or may not need that, whether it's food service or athletics, especially as you look at athletes collecting lesson fees, you may need additional dollars there over time. The capital plan is simply, if you remember the debt that we refinanced, those transfers need to occur. We had debt that was out to 2031 or two, and we shortened that, refinanced that to 2021. So you can see the last payment is half, approximately half, and then that will roll off and we won't have any more payments in 2023. The next two are the ones that are certainly optional in addition to the $40,000 every year, and those are ones that you'll make each year, they haven't been done yet, but it'll be based upon our financial ability to do those, and those are to the permanent improvement fund that's earmarked for technology. So you still have latitude with how you use those dollars that are over there. And then finally, as I mentioned to you, the transfers within the general fund, that's the preschool and Medicaid, and as I said, that's also reflected on the non-operating revenue as well. So if we can go back to the very, very beginning and kind of wrap up there with that simplified We have to always, I noticed if you could just step up to the table, sorry. We always have to keep our eye on things here, and as we look at that yellow line, that's the line we have to look at year by year. Do I expect this to be that level 2.4 million short in revenue in 2022? Well, yes, if every single one of these assumptions occur. But each year, this organization will make decisions, it has its eye on that, and our job is to obviously not make decisions that grow that beyond what we can sustain so that we can, you know, get as long a life as we can out of existing levies that we have. So questions on that? Did I, I mean, too much, too, not enough, too late, too late at night?
No.
It was good. So, and as always, if you have questions, and for those of you who didn't get a copy of this, we'll get this on the webpage as well.
Okay. Thank you. That was the last time on our agenda. Anything else? Anybody? Alright, we are adjourned at 6:23. 6:24.